Good evening. My name is Keith Romano. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Is the recorder on?
It is.
It is. This is the Inland Wetlands Commission Meeting for the Town of Monroe. It is June 23rd, 2021, and the time is 7:05 PM. I'll take a roll call of the members of the commission and staff present during tonight's remote meeting. Please answer here or present, starting with myself, Keith Romano, Lois Spence, who's our vice chair and secretary.
Here.
I, Jim Stewart, who's our treasurer and a licensed engineer and surveyor at the Connecticut.
Here.
Clark Gengres, Ross Mastaraco.
I'm here.
BJ Hall.
Here.
And our inland wetlands agent, Donna Zazinski, recording secretary Sarah Shroud. And we don't have anybody else from the town, right?
Unfortunately, we do not.
Yeah, okay. We also have Barbara Schellenberg, who's our town council, or our council for these proceedings. Before I start, read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. Inland Wetlands' mission statement, the objective and purpose of Inland Wetlands Commission is to provide for their role in protecting and preservation of the inland wetlands and water courses within the Town of Monroe. Meeting procedure, in the normal course of our meeting, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission during which and after which the commission will ask the applicant questions. Due to remote meeting status, I'd like to ask the applicant keep presentation as concise as possible. The commission will then review town, staff, and other independent comments. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask all comments we made to the chair or commission. After any and all comments pro and opposition or of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Again, due to remote meeting status, please keep comments or questions direct in it, or a time limit of three minutes maybe, if posed. It's not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There'll be no further opportunity for new questions unless new materials entered as evidence, as testimony during the response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to inland related matters. Other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow a similar format with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. The meeting files are published in general unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are just two small additions. Under the permitted use for the Department of Public Works under their existing permit, they just wanted to let the commission know that they're doing work at 6976 West Maiden Lane regarding the crossover and the head wall. They're doing a repair replacement. And also on East Village Road, they're doing a drainage replacement. And that falls under item G14, permitted uses as of right, IPU 201801, Department of Public Works.
Thank you, and that's it?
That's it.
Okay, great. Um, Joe, this is the general particip- public participation, uh, excuse me, general public participation for the meeting. If anybody has anything to address the commission with that is not something that is currently or will be in front of us in the near future, now's the time to speak.
Excuse me, this is Phil Pedros about High Ridge Road. Did you guys already do that?
No, we just started.
We just started the meeting.
Okay, sorry. I had a bad connection. I was trying to get in before and I couldn't connect.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're all set with that. Subdivision reports, recommendations of P&amp;Z, none. Regular meeting, no public input. IWC 2021 dash zero two, to High Ridge Drive, new home construction. Is that Mr. Pedros again?
Yes, sir.
And also Fred De Make on the engineer for the project.
Okay.
Okay, um, basically, again, just to go over what we're proposing, we, it's a residential lot, approximately one acre, a little more than one acre, has about 2,000 square feet of wetlands, which basically, um, it's right on both sides of a brook that goes through intermittent stream. Um, actually, it's a brook. Um, there's also a town drainage easement on the southerly parcel, on the southerly part of the property, which has a coat, a pipe coming out with a head wall, um, near the wetlands. We did have the wetlands flagged since the last meeting. The last meeting, we did not have the wetlands flagged by soil scientists. We had it flagged, and actually, the wetlands ended up being farther away, slightly farther than what was shown on the, um, original plan that I did. Previously, I just, what I did is I tried to trace the, um, wetlands that were shown on the subdivision map. Uh, but actually, when we had, um, Scott Stevens from Soil Science and Environmental Services, uh, flag it, it came a little closer to the brook. Um, it actually goes up very steep, and that's probably the reason. Um, the, we did, we did address, I tried to address all the comments. I know we moved all the, um, proposed, um, plantings to the, uh, to the high side, those to the, um, outside the disturbed area and the, uh, you know, limited disturbance and the, uh, split rail fence. So we moved all those outside of that. And I believe we also addressed as many comments as possible from the town engineer. He did review it again, and I think there's one or two minor comments, uh, to address after, after addressing all the rest. But I believe we addressed everything, um, that the actual wetlands commission asked for from last month. Um, and basically, that's it. If you have any questions, I'd be, I'd try to answer all of them.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Spence. You're muted, Lois. Oh, there you go.
I know, I was working with it. Um, I only have one. I was wondering if you, uh, could upgrade your erosion, erosion control, um, to, for instance, that would differ, um, perhaps in addition to the silk fence because of the steepness of the slope going down to the brook and with the extent, extendtiveness of the clearing that's happening. Um, I think the, the better the erosion control, the better. The more, the better.
Such as would you like. Would be happy if I could, uh, be behind the silk fence, put hay bales to ensure that the silk fence holds up.
Uh, well, hay bales aren't my personal favorite, but I guess they're better than just silk fence. I, maybe I'll spring a lot of speed. And, um, but with the-
We could stake the hay bales.
Hmm?
You could do, we could stake the hay bales. Behind it, stake them, or put a double row of silk fence.
Well, I prefer the hay bales, I'd say. Just that, just an upgraded plan would be great. It doesn't have, you know, just include it on the plan, but it doesn't have to be submitted again.
Okay, so we will add the hay bales.
Thank you. That was it for me.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Spence. Commissioner Stewart.
I'm good at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner Mastaraco.
I'm good.
Commissioner Gengres. Commissioner Gengres, just mute yourself. Still can't hear you. I don't know what's going on. We can't hear Clark.
Uh, let me see.
He said, he says thumbs up, so I guess that means, uh, he doesn't have any-
All right, I don't know why we can't hear him.
Commissioner Hall.
I see we have the wetlands water course and soil report. I think the, uh, landscaping legend has been updated, or, so everything is in order for me.
All right, great. I have nothing either, so, um-
Ross, can I just mention that Scott did have some other notations that he needed to fix, but I do believe that those can be incorporated into, um, an approval if you decide to move this to deliberations.
Okay. Um, anything else? Okay, so anything else from the applicant?
No, like I said, uh, the, I think there was two comments left that Scott had, I believe, that, you know, after reviewing it again, and I think they're both minor. And I could, I could address those with Scott directly.
Okay.
Do we need to discuss it on the bond, or is that something that Scott takes care of with the applicant? Because that's one of the comments on the sheet.
Well, right, and there was, uh, we do have a bond estimate, um, but we can discuss that during deliberations, I believe.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see that. Thank you.
Okay.
Someone like to make a motion to move this to deliberations?
I'll make a motion that we move this to deliberation.
Commissioner Hall makes a motion to move this application to deliberations. Does it have a second?
Um, Clark was second, although we still can't hear him.
Still can't hear him, but Commissioner Gengres seconded. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, and-
Thank you.
Now we're at public hearing. IWC dash 2021 dash zero four five Victoria Drive, proposed athletic field, building, and parking.
So we did, I, I forgot, that we did get a letter, um, of extension for this application. Um, they are going to, um, postpone this till the next meeting, I believe.
Okay. Very good.
So we've added that to the-
Sorry, did I cut you off?
No, you're okay.
Uh, IWV dash 2019 dash 15, 1380 Monroe Turnpike, disturbance within an upland review area.
Good afternoon.
Okay, so this is Laurel.
Hi, I'm attorney Laurel Fedor, and, um, I submitted an aerial survey of the property, and I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at those pictures.
Um, those were emailed to the commission. I didn't have a chance to, uh, hold on one second here. I will share those on my screen. Okay. Okay.
So, if I may, um, explain a little bit?
Okay, go for it.
Okay, um, there was a disturbance on the property by Frank Schrodel, who was, um, farming. And, um, he made trenching and other activity in the property. And the best way that we thought to try to, um, get a picture of it was to get an aerial survey. So, he also put up a hoop house that you can see from the picture. It's kind of a long gray cylinder building, and then extending from the back of it, if you'll see it, a dark impression. That's one of the trenches. He made irrigation trenches from a pond. So, we're trying to find out what's the best thing-
Excuse me, Laurel, Laurel, excuse me for a moment. Could you just help orientate us? Uh, because there's no, not a lot of good reference here to streets and, and position and whatnot.
Okay. All right, well, it, it abuts Monroe Turnpike. You cannot see the property-
Where are we looking at, on our, on our right, on our left, where is-
Okay, um, where that gray cylinder, that, see where the, I, the little cursor is?
Yes.
That gray cylinder, that's the, the hoop house. And if you, if you follow up on the screen, that goes towards Monroe Turnpike.
Okay.
Now, I had to blow it up as best I could to really get the picture of where the, um, the disturbances was. And I tried to get the Monroe Turnpike in there, but it couldn't, wouldn't work for me. So, um, so the, the water, those large water bodies towards the top of the screen, those are ponds that are near Monroe Turnpike. That large pond is behind Frank Schrodel's house. And then to the right, there's, there's another little area, and that's another pond. And then you can't see it, but there's another pond. So anyway,
Okay.
Yeah, so that's very close to Monroe Turnpike, up towards the top of the screen there.
Understood.
Then there's a long driveway that you follow back that brings you to where the farmhouse is. That's a small gray block next to, um, you can, I don't know if you can see that those long, uh, brown areas, that's where farming takes place, like right there. That's farming. Those are rows of gardens.
Right.
And then, then the little farmhouse, yeah, over there. And you have, that's a barn where she's circling. And that's a little greenhouse. So, and then that's the farmhouse, the old farmhouse. Okay, so the disturbances, the trenching, and, um, so that's where we are. And I don't know what the commission wants us to do as far as correcting the problem. And, um, I mean, if you want us to come up with a plan, I don't know what you propose.
Let's talk about what the actual violation was, because it's been a while.
Yes, I know.
Refresh the commission. Who, who wants to, you, you wanna, Laurel, do you wanna, uh, discuss it? Or, I don't know, I don't know who has it.
Oh, I, I mean, I have a copy of it.
Could I ask a question first?
Yeah.
Sure, for sure.
Commissioner Hall here. Um, has the, uh, legal ownership of the property been settled?
No. Well, no, no, it's, it's still in the estate, it's still in the probate. So no, the legal ownership has not been settled at this time. I mean, the will, um, grants the property to Rose Torock, Rose Marie Torock, who is the fiduciary, and Frank Schrodel. They each have a, you know, an equal share. So how that's configured, that's one of the issues. Um, so that's where we are right now.
So, so who is, who is, who is leading the charge here to come up with a solution?
Well, the fiduciary is in, you know, is, uh, has a task of, um, seeing the estate through.
Can you call in for me?
I'm sorry?
Oh, I'll be right up.
That's somebody's background, sorry, or-
Okay.
That was any of them.
All right, the fiduciary is tasked to, um, put the estate through probate and, um, resolve all the issues. And we were in the process of doing that, and then this problem came up. So, um, this is an unexpected problem that the fiduciary has to deal with. And, um, so we're dealing with it. Um, we got an aerial survey to see how extensive the damage was to respond to your violation.
All right, let's, let's walk us through what the surveys, unless there was anything else from anybody. Let's wa- walk us through what's going on here.
Okay, so the violation. All right, let's see. Okay, I'm on, I have the Town of Monroe violation background report. And it talks about, um, the complaint that work is being done on property without permits. The land is being cleared without proper permits and potentially land of adjacent properties being cleared without their permission. There are three existing structures dating back to 1940 on the property. Monroe Land Record Map utilized for data accumulation shows a driveway to the rear of the property to access these existing structures. It appears that the driveway shown on the map from, from 2006 is not the location presently utilized. The accessway crosses an upland review area and resulted in the elimination of trees. There are several large areas of open land within the upland review areas, and actually some within wetlands that have been disturbed without any permits for such. The property consists of several pockets of wetlands, ponds, and upland review areas. Currently, much of the property appears to have been cleared and potential farming activities have, are being performed on the site without permits or approvals from the town or possibly the current property owners. It was noted that a new hoop structure has been erected on the site, not only without any permits, but also within an upland review area. This property is zoned residential and farming. However, assessors noted it was zoned forest, meaning a specific portion of the property is to have trees, either new or existing. Currently, it appears that a majority of existing trees has actually been removed. During a recent site visit on January 27, 2020, it was noted that a doghouse with a fenced-in pen and a shed have been installed, all without permits. These structures are not within the wetlands or upland review area, but still require a permit by zoning and possibly the building department, depending upon size. Um, it was observed that there was a large pile of trees, woodchips, and some machinery on site within the upland review areas and potentially within the wetlands, doing additional clearing. All this activity is unpermitted and unapproved. The property appears to have many disturbed areas within upland review area. And then it goes into description of violation slash property. Unpermitted structure within upland review area, hook, I think she meant whoever type this made a mistake, meaning hoop structures require permits from several departments. Unpermitted structures on property shed and fenced-in doghouse requiring zoning and possible building department permits. Unapproved accessway within upland review area, unapproved, unpermitted disturbance within upland review area, unapproved, unpermitted disturbance within wetlands, unapproved, unpermitted clearing within upland review area, unapproved, unpermitted clearing within wetlands, unapproved, unpermitted piles of wood, woodchips, and equipment within upland review area. And then it says associated wetlands permits not applicable, and available records documentation. And it says data accumulation plan prepared for Frank Schrodel, 1380 Monroe Turnpike 111 by Spath Bajorklin, and it's map number 2930 dated June 28, 2006. And then a potential violations map, 1380 Monroe Turnpike, dated 11/1/2019, revised 1/30/2020. So that was in the violations report. And then there's all these pictures and, you know, things that were wrong.
Right. Um, Laurel, so you have two, two different things that we're concerned about as the commission. You have, uh, you have activity in a regulated area, and then you actually have activity in the wetlands, right? So it's two different things that we're looking at.
Yeah.
Typically, and I think the history since I've been on the commission, is that anybody who's done anything directly impacting actual wetlands, we're always looking for a restoration, right? So, so the plan, the, the very, I could tell you, at the very least, your plan, your restoration plan has to show you restoring the wetlands to their previous condition. I'm not, uh, you know, I'm speaking for the commission, and if anybody wants anything else to say, that's fine. I'm just trying to get the ball rolling for you. The upland review area, you'll have to make an application for acti- those activities in the upland review area, and then the commission will decide, you know, how they want to move forward with that, I believe. Um, the other thing that, that, that came out to me, it's not necessarily a wetlands-related matter, but you're, you're saying this has a forestry classification on it?
Yeah.
And that's 25 acres minimum of forest?
Yeah. I, I mean, I don't know what the criteria is.
Well, I know the criteria now is, I'm trying, I'm trying to do it. It's a 25 acre minimum. If you have 25 acres of trees and you cut down one acre of trees, you don't have a forestry classification anymore, and you lose the tax value.
Understood.
You have to, I'm just saying that that's, that's shocking. I didn't think this site was 25 acres. But maybe this was a grandfathered in forestry with a different thing.
It's a 36 acre par- 36 or 32 acre parcel. That's why we did the aerial survey, because it was-
Right. So if he's clearing trees and a forestry classification, not only do you, there's a, there's major penalties for that. But that's not our commission. That's just something you just, I think, it just clicked in my head.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Now, does anybody else have any other suggestions of how they should proceed, other than what I said? Please speak out. Speaker, Commissioner Gengres?
I, Commissioner Hall here. I, I do have one question. This, this original complaint had three addresses, one of them being 43 Bird's Eye Road. Is that still impacted in this? I can see it in the, the lower right corner of the ma- map here.
I believe it still is, because, it is. I'm-
So they were doing unapproved clearing at 43 Bird's Eye Road also?
I'm not, I don't know the specifics with regard to that property. I know that there is a lawsuit with regard to that against Mr. Schrodel for his activities, whatever he did. Um, pending, Bridgeport Superior Court.
Okay, and it's, it's not-
I, I will say, they brought the estate into that, but we, you know, recently, so, um, but we don't necessarily want to be involved in that.
Okay, the profit lines are not entirely clear here as to where Bird's Eye is, so, thank you. Well, we got plenty of other things to focus on.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Gengres. Still don't hear him. He's unmuted, but we do not hear him.
Has he got a volume control, maybe?
Yeah. Input, is your microphone plugged in? Do I try to call in? Clark. Commissioner Spence, while he's trying to figure it out, why don't you go ahead?
Um, this one is particularly challenging, because there are certain permitted uses as of right for farming. So, and, so there's a civil component where there was clearing on property that wasn't his, and I gather that's what is in court. Um, there was no declaratory ruling, which is unfortunate. Technically, what they're supposed to do before they conduct any activities like that is bring it to us, and we are to determine whether or not these things are requiring a permit or if they're not requiring a permit. Certain activities do fall under the nonpermitted, nonpermitted. It's unfortunate that the double use of that word within the statute. Um, there are certain things that are permitted as of right. So, and including some activities in wetlands. So, without knowing specifically what they are, it's really hard to, um, proceed, I guess, because we need to know exactly what the activities were before we can demand or require a restoration. If these things, if it isn't right, there's no restoration required after we make a declaratory ruling. So, um, so we would need, I guess, to know exactly what activities happened on his property that would be possibly permitted as of right, as opposed to needing a permit. And the others are civil, uh, it sounds like. Now, I'm not a lawyer, but it, this, this sounds kind of complicated. So I'm not quite sure what to do.
Well, I, if I may say, um, if you have, even though you're farming as of right, that doesn't give you permission, I'll just say this, to put up a barn without getting a building permit. It's part of farming. You still have to do, you still have to follow the regulations. So, I mean, we didn't know what extent he was doing things. Um, we, we allowed him to do the farming. You know, there was gardens already existing there that had been used for, you know, 50 years, and he decided to expand on that. And, um, he created these ditches to the hoop house for irrigation, and he dug a number of ditches. So, I mean, I walked the property with the fiduciary, and that's what we saw. So, I mean, I don't know if you have to go out there and look, but that's what we saw. We saw a number of ditches, long ditches for hoses, and you can see them in that one map, that picture.
Laurel, if I may, it's, it's obviously going to be the burden of, of the property owner to, to prove that certain things he has a right to do, you know, farming, forestry, whatever it is. So we're not going to try to determine that for him or her, whatever the case may be. Um, in this particular situation, Mr. Schrodel was the one who did all the activity amongst all the properties. He's the-
Yes. Yes.
And he is now, just so I can understand correctly, how are, what's the relationship between him and you?
Well, he's a beneficiary of the will. I represent the estate.
The estate.
I represent the estate of John J. Stofan. And the estate is, um, has a fiduciary who's, um, doing, you know, stepped in the shoes of Mr. Stofan because he's now deceased and, um, is taking care of his personal and business activities.
So, so, so Strodell's in a way your client?
No, he's not.
I, I'm still not quite understanding the situ, the whole.
I represent, I represent, if you, if Mr. Stofan didn't die, I represent essentially his interest. So I represent the estate's interest because he's passed away and.
Yes, but he's, he left, he left the property to.
Huh? I'm sorry?
He, he, he left the property, Mr. Strodell?
And Ms. Torek. He left it to two beneficiaries in the will.
Gotcha. Okay, so you're trying to clean up the mess?
Correct.
Okay, so this guy who did these activities, is he in the, is he in the mindset that he's, you know, and some of them are cross property lines? Is he in the mindset that he's going to fix any violation regardless of where it landed on which, any property?
Well, this is the problem. I don't think, I don't know. I don't think he's professional enough to fix them. That's what I'm worried about because if he knew what he was doing, we wouldn't be here in the first place. So I hesitate to, to have somebody who's not competent to fix this problem.
The reason why I bring it up is we've had issues in the past where we've got a resolution to fix some kind of violation. But since some of it's on another property, we don't know how to hold someone to the fire to make sure it's on another property. So without having to get the other property owner involved, which you may have to, and, and, and once we get a decision and now ask them, that property owner to put up a bond because his property needs to be repaired. So it's kind of like a really ugly kind of situation here. So I'm just asking in your presentation, which I'm assuming you'll have to do at some point, are you going to include the other properties as part of? So if you're, if the, if the, whoever's fixing it does that property, but doesn't touch other property, it's not considered a, a, a finished job. You follow what I mean?
Yeah, um.
So that's something for you to think about, how you, how you, how you're going to handle that when you come to us with some kind of an application.
I see. Now, the bond.
What?
Can you explain a little about the bond?
Well, typically in a situation like this, some kind of bond is determined that is, um, is, is, is fronted at the beginning of the project to guarantee the works can get done.
Okay.
Right? But it's usually attached to the property that has the violation and the property owner is the one who provides it. But if his, if his discrepancies went off property, it puts us in a situ, we had a similar situation that happened, you know? So we're, we're going to be sure to, you know, make sure that the, the, you know, the wetlands that have been violated everywhere are, are going to be getting fixed.
I see.
Yeah.
So, all right, let me ask you another, I'm sorry to interrupt, but since you're on this topic. So you're saying that the other property owner at, at forty three Bird's Eye, he would have to put up part of the bond too?
No, no, not necessarily. We don't know that yet, but if I'm saying is that if, if whoever it is that's going to make this application and guarantee the restoration, so they're only doing this property, I'm not going to the property. Or let's just say the other property owner is so pissed, PO'd, he says, you can't come on my property to fix this.
Right.
But now he's got to get a violation. He's got to put up a bond maker. So it's, it's kind of like, we have to know that the whole entire thing is going to get fixed regardless of where it lands on people's properties based on his activities, right? So if he, if he went across property line, now something's got to be worked out between all the property owners so that it gets done. Um, but this is just like an infancy discussion because you really have to come up with the, more, more importantly at this point, you got to come up with how you're going to fix it.
Right.
Um, now you got like, like Lois said, there's a lot of stuff going on here. You know, you got four or three farming regulations, all this other stuff. So it's a, you know, something that you have to figure out with whether you need to bring in professionals, engineers, you know, whoever, specialists in this type of thing. You got to present to us how you guys want to fix it. And either, and, and, and come up with a, what would have normally been an application for anything that would have required our approval in the upland review area or even in the wetlands, if that's the case.
Okay.
I have another question here.
Sure.
Commissioner Hall. Um, when John Stofan owned the property, was he farming and was it considered a, a farming property for zoning?
He was farming. Um, I don't know if it was considered, you know, a farming property. I, I know it was under forestry, the forestry, but they, he was farming. I mean, he was allowing Frank to farm there too because his parents used to farm and then he farmed. And then as he grew older, he allowed Frank to do, maintain and work on the gardens that were there.
Okay, so grandfathered in as a farm then? Uh, it would seem.
Okay.
Okay, that, uh, back to you, Commissioner Ramallo.
Thank you. Uh, any, anything else from the Commissioner Gingras?
Hey Keith, I'm on the phone.
Great.
First, first off, as, as a family who used to have farms, she's going to have to find out how far back the property owner has for rights as a farm. Because I know they're breaking this up, this property is going to be broken up. But some of that pro, some of that farming is going to be allowed if that property was, you know, goes back fifty, sixty, seventy years, was always considered a farmland. So some of that stuff is going to be overlooked, but not the stuff that's going on in the upland review where they remove the forestry. So she's going to have to find out what the, that, you know, initial property was being allowed to do from the town, I think.
Yep.
Okay.
Was that it? Commissioner Gingras? Thank you. Commissioner Spence?
I'm not sure that we have to, um, find out if it's classified as a farm because the statutes and, and our regulations period as a permitted use as of right. Um, which means that they don't need a permit. They just need to find out from us whether or not we will consider that. Um, and because they have certain, what we would consider violations under normal circumstances on their property, doesn't mean that it can't be allowed to continue. All they need is a permit for it. So if one party, this is hard because I don't remember the names that go with which party, which person. Um, if somebody is upset that part of their land was used for illegal, what they consider illegal activities and they want it rectified, that's fine. But whoever owns the piece that is being farmed legally and kept all of his own activities on his property, they can say if they receive a permit, it would be a permit after the fact. But we, you know, they can come in and get a permit for it. You don't need a permit to be a farmer. You do need a permit to conduct certain activities in wetlands and watercourses and certain of them. So let me ask a question. There was the, um, the trees that were cut. Was that in a wetland or was that um, in an upland review and was it part of the original, um, twenty five, thirty five acres?
I believe it was. All the above, all the above.
Because clearing, clear cutting, well, it depends on where it was. Um, what did he do with the area when he cut down all the trees?
Um, some of the area is still open and some of the area is, um, being farmed. Meaning row, row crop, not like livestock.
One of the things that's allowed is clear cutting, uh, was not allowed. Here's, this is right out of our regulations. It says, um, shall not be construed to include clear cutting of timber except for the expansion of agricultural property. So since he had, if that was, if that was in addition to an area that he was already farming or was this a separate farm piece altogether?
Um, I mean, it's, it's within the area where he was farming. I mean, it's, you know, you have a I, from the, I, it's too bad I can't like point to you, but, um, there's that long garden in the front near closest to the farmhouse. And then there's a stone wall. And then on the other side of the stone wall, he cut down trees.
Right. I think the way it works is that if you, you, he has both farming and forestry. The forest had, if that, those trees were under his acreage that was farming, yes, he, as long as it wasn't a violation somewhere else, he can clear those trees and start growing crop on it. But if that was part of his forestry count, uh, volume, right? And now he brought himself under regulation.
Yes.
He was under, had to have twenty five acres. If he took an acre out of forestry, as far as I know, because I've been researching this because I'm trying to do this somewhere, he gets major penalties and probably has to go back and pay full taxes on all that land all the way back. So that's where you have some kind of a mess that doesn't really apply to us, but it can in a way kind of transcend over. But again, the Commissioner Spence, what you're saying, it's, it's the burden of the property owner at this point to show us all the documentation or it's part of their application and say, this is what I am allowed to do. So maybe this part of the violation isn't correct. There's some kind of violation here, obviously, right?
Right.
You have to decipher it, whether you need to, like I said, you have to hire soil scientists and engineers and surveyors, wherever you got to do it. You got to prove to us what you were able to do and not do. Show us a plan to fix whatever it is that you guys screwed up in the wetlands. And then also apply, post-apply for any of the activities done in the up, upland review. I think that's pretty clear.
Okay.
And, uh, all right?
All right, and one more question.
Yeah.
Sorry. Now, what about that hoop house? Same thing, even if it's in.
If it's, if it's in, if it's in the violation report.
Yeah.
And you have to, like I said.
Do all the.
The burden, you have, you have the burden to prove to us, okay, this is a permanent, it's not permitted. It has a building permit, doesn't have a building permit. It's, it's, it's inclusive under farming, it's not inclusive under farming.
Okay.
We don't know this because we're not, you know, active farmers, right? So that's the burden of you to, to, to show us, right?
Okay. How much time do I have?
Uh, good question. Um, we.
Thirty days?
Well, no, well, well, okay, so.
I'm just teasing you.
We have, look, when we're, once we start a, a converse, a dialogue, we like to be kept in the loop, right?
No, I, I apologize that the delay, and I won't take any more time, but you know, it was a delay with the, you know, I'm not going to put on the aerial surveyor, but you know, you have to wait for people to do things and.
Yeah, and we know this is a very complicated.
And he didn't want to be involved anymore, so then I had to do, you know, sidestep on that. But anyway, so I'm here.
So at the next meeting, just give us a report. Even if it's, even if it could just even be a letter too.
Oh, all right.
This is where we're, this is where we've gone. You know, um, we've, we've, we've postponed this for you guys for so long because of the complicated nature here. But we like to see is people not dodging it. Right?
Yeah.
So, um, you know, if we feel like you're dragging your feet, we're going to start saying, hey, you know.
Right.
Let's go. Giddy up, right?
Yeah.
All right.
One more, more comment, Keith.
Sure. Commissioner Spence?
Up to the, um, you're not really an applicant. Um, it's up to the, the violator, we'll call it right now, to state what it is that was done and what they feel should be. For instance, the hoop house, they feel that should be a permitted as of right because it's essential to the farming operation. That's right out of the, that's, that's right out of the regulation. And we are the ones that decide yes or no. Um, whether or not it is a permitted use as of right. But if it's not a permitted use as of right, it just means that we can issue a permit if they want it to stay. So that's, that's, and, and for each, um, for each point, that, that, that's the way it goes. Yes, this is permitted, no, that's not. And, you know, we just go down the line that.
Let me ask, Laurel, are you a land use attorney?
Um, I do a lot of different things.
But are you a land use attorney? Like, is this something, a part of your normal?
I had done zoning permits, I do real estate.
All right, so you, you know, you know, you, then this is kind of like, you know, you've been here before then. And as far as like what you need to do as far as what Commissioner Spence is saying?
Yes, I understand, but you know, every commission is different. It's, they're all individuals that make up a commission. So it's always good to hear what you're looking for.
Okay. All right. Thanks for, uh, showing up.
Thank you. I'll talk to you next month.
All right, great.
Have a nice day. Bye.
All right, remediation submissions, IWR twenty twenty one dash zero two, one eighteen Elm Street, unapproved clearing beyond posted upland review areas. Mediation of IWV, IWV dash twenty twenty dash twelve.
So I've sent this, uh, young man a email and I called him before the last meeting and he keeps saying that he's going to be at the meeting, but then he never shows. So I don't know how the commission wants to handle this. If they want to just with, um, deny this submission without prejudice or what they want, what you guys want to do. I, I don't know how to get him in here. I have sent extensive emails and and I know Denise was reaching out to him before she left too, so.
What is our other, you know, option for pressure? Is there another option? Start mining or something? I mean.
He, he has received a notice of violation? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you want to, you know, hold off and wait one more, uh, meeting, we can do that. And I'll try again and just let him know that, look, he needs to either come in or the commission's going to take a more serious step such as a citation or.
Right. So he hasn't gotten a citation yet?
No.
I think it's about time then, at this point. If he's dodged us twice. You know, look, everybody has, you know, citation is going to be lifted, right? And the other thing too is maybe a referral to P and Z that, you know, he's created a violation and he couldn't go for, well, maybe it doesn't matter. Um, he couldn't go for like a building permit or anything, right? Because he still has to come to us.
Yeah, he's still got to come in.
To come to get a building permit, right? So, yeah, that wouldn't matter then. Um, never mind. But yeah, why not send him the citation if everybody agrees?
From, from the site visit I made, I could see that he was still actively using the property. So it's not like it's abandoned. It's, uh, he's continuing whatever it is he's doing there. Call it his, his lake home.
He's, he's stalling whatever he's doing, but you know, we just got to do what we can do. And then that's it. And I think that the, the citation is the next step, I, I, as far as I know.
Well, do you want to make a motion to just deny this submission with, without prejudice? So he can hopefully make one again or? I, I don't really know how that works. Um, maybe Barbara can.
Yeah.
Give us a little guidance because this was a remediation submission, not an application.
It, what do you mean by a remediation submission?
Well, these are only here, they, they submit this just to address violation concerns. And I don't know. It doesn't seem to be like, um, like a regular IWC application. We don't normally know these or, or, you know, run them through a public hearing or anything like that because they're solely just to get, work with the homeowner to get the violation back in compliance.
Okay, in that case, I, I don't think it's necessary to act on that now if the commission wants to take further action. The commission can do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So there you have it.
Commissioner Spence?
As the, um, violation been noted on the land record?
No, that would normally be done with a citation, I believe.
As a citation start a clock running?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
Because if it does, we, there is, I don't
Would start the clock. It, it would have to be, there would have to be a hearing within 10 days.
Oh, yes, correct. If there's a citation, yes.
So it has to be timed just right so that it, it happens 10 days before our meeting? Because otherwise, we have to have a special meeting in order to
Well, um, the citation usually goes, if they want to have a hearing, they go to the citation officer, which is the, um, attorney, um,
Okay. Kathy Kohut?
Yeah. You wanted, you're looking to do that versus a cease and correct order? Um, I mean, because normally for wetlands, the, uh, property owner would come before the wetlands commission. There would be a cease and correct order issued, and then within 10 days, uh, the property owner would have to come before the commission, since it's a wetlands matter.
Um, okay, maybe we've been doing it wrong, because normally if they, if, if, um, like Denise, where someone had issued a cease and repair, whatever, um, it would, that would be given to the citation hearing officer who would then, if they request, when they get that notice, if they request within the 10 days to have a hearing, it would normally go to the citation hearing officer.
Okay, I
That's how it's normally been run, so maybe we need to look at that procedure.
Yeah, let me, let, let, let's review this. If, if, if we can table this right now and review it and come back to it, okay?
Alright. I just thought of something funny, I gotta say, it's a pun. This guy was caught with his plants down. I was gonna say, alright, I was three seconds too late to explain it to
That's great.
That is a dad joke if I ever heard one.
Okay, that's why I was like smirking before. Alright, so we're, uh, tabling 118 Elm Street until further, um, uh, review from our attorney, uh, IWC dash 2021 dash zero six R, 64 Cambridge Drive, remediation to entail earthwork, drainage and upland enhancement to restore previous watershed drainage patterns to eastern wetlandsism. I'm gonna turn this over to Attorney Schellenberg to inform us about some revelations.
Okay. Um, and, and you know, at the last meeting of the commission, the intervenor raised a procedural issue as to whether uh, the application that's before you is appropriate. Um, and the intervenors, uh, making up the claim that there has to be a permit application, uh, for this regulated activity. Um, I've had discussions with both Attorney Finn and Attorney Green about this matter, and I've done some of my own research, but at this point in time, uh, there's no definitive answer, and we've decided that additional research needs to be done. I do think that under the circumstances, the commission certainly has the option to, um, wrap up the, this matter, so to speak, uh, in terms of presentation or at least continue with, uh, the applicant's presentation. I know the intervenor has definitely completed, uh, his presentation. Uh, all I would say is that if the commission chooses to do that, I would not want you to start deliberations until I've had a chance to further research this matter. I would come back to the commission before your next meeting to let you know if I believe that the intervenor is correct or not, so you would know how to proceed.
And in our discussion about this matter, um, we decided that we were gonna leave it up to the commission to decide. And my, my biggest concern is that we've spent so much time, volunteer hours on this, this topic, and, you know, to go forward, although, you know, gains can be made towards getting to a resolution, but we also could be in a sense wasting our time if this application needs to be restarted. So in fairness to all of you, I want you guys to decide, you know, you know, about, you know, your time invested into this thing. And that's really the only concern that I have as far as going forward.
Mr. Chairman
Hold on, Attorney Finn, you got a second? I just, you know, I kind of spoke to my commission, I wanna see what their thoughts are.
Well, I was hoping to be heard for five minutes before
Five minutes? Let me just, let's, let's let them respond to what they just heard and what they just learned. And, you know, anybody have, from any of the commissioners have anything to say about this? No comment? No comment? No comment. Alright, so go ahead, go ahead Attorney Finn, continue.
Thank you. I don't know if anybody was hearing that buzzing. I don't, I don't think it's me, if you're hearing the buzzing. Um, uh, so thank you very much. For the record, it's, uh, Attorney Finn for the, uh, owner of Cambridge Drive. Can you hear me okay?
Barbara, this might be coming from you.
Okay, let me, let me mute my
I think that's better. Thank you. So for the record, Attorney Finn for the applicant, uh, I wanna thank, uh, you, uh, Mr. Chairman and the members of the commission for allowing me to address you this evening. I, I will be, uh, fairly brief. Uh, I, I just wanna note a couple of things as you think about this process going forward. At the last hearing, Attorney Green stated on the record that he and his clients supported my client's application and submitted plan to restore the wetlands. Mr. Green has also stated in the, in, in this, at prior hearings with regard to this application, that his client considers restoration of this property and the wetlands to be of paramount interest and wanted it to commence as quickly as possible. Attorney Green now raises the procedural issue that Attorney Schellenberg has identified for you, which, and raising that procedural issue is totally inconsistent with the prior statements that they support our application, think it's a good way to restore the wetlands, and they want the wetlands restored as quickly as possible. So it, it goes back to our, 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 um, our view that, uh, the intervenor really only is seeking to delay and obstruct the plan uh, that he stated he supports. And to challenge a process that this commission, uh, has frequently and successfully used for years to address violations of its regulations. Uh, my understanding is, is that this commission has used this form that we submitted, this site, uh, remediation restoration form in connection with notices of violations and have ruled on those, uh, forms and allowed, uh, uh, work to be done to remediate violations in this manner, time and time again. And in fact, we have a, an example of that this evening where you just heard 118 Elm Street. And if, uh, Mr. Green's view is correct, that means all these prior attempts to, 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 all these other remediation applications were defective, including this 118 Elm Street that's pending before you now. So my client has followed your regulations and has used your form and has done exactly what you have historically done with respect to, uh, remediation applications in response to notice of violations. My client, with all respect, is entitled to go forward with an application that complies with your regulations. If the intervenor wants to challenge this process, this procedure, the place to do that is in court. But to force you to adopt a global or a sea change in the way you handle these, this notice of violations without, just because he's raised this allegation is, is a very slippery slope for you and, and a mistake. If he wants to challenge this, he should do it in court. Um, I promised not to make legal arguments and I'm nearing, uh, the mid, midpoint of my presentation. But with all respect, Mr. Green frames the issue incorrectly. The issue is not whether your regulations authorize the commission to handle notices of violations the way you have done for many, many years. Your regulations allow you to proceed in the way you have historically and the way my client has proceeded in connection with the pending notice of violation. And frankly, it's the experience of members of our team that this is the way other municipalities have handled NOBs, either very similar to the way you have done it or the same way that you have done it. The question is not whether your regulations authorize us to proceed in the way that we have done. The real question is, is whether your regulations are authorized by the general statutes. And that is a procedural issue, a purely legal question, and it may be that there's no current law on point. Uh, Teresa Schellenberg is right. This issue was brought to my attention really, uh, most seriously, uh, yesterday morning, and I haven't had time to do any research, and I may not find any case law on this. But that's precisely the type of case that should be addressed by the court if the intervenor wants to take an appeal of your decision. To throw away your process merely because of this allegation without getting a definitive opinion from a judge, I think is a mistake not only for this application, but the way you historically have addressed notices of violation. As we know, reasonable lawyers can have different views. In fact, you know, there's that old saying, if you ask two lawyers for an opinion, you're gonna get three different opinions. So we know lawyers can differ and they can be, uh, they can be, uh, uh, objective in their differences. Um, but to request that you abandon the process that you have worked on for years and has served you well in your mission to protect wetlands and the watercourses in Monroe, merely on this allegation would be a mistake. Um, it would only serve really to make remediation and restoration of wetlands more time intensive and more delayed. Why give in when it is highly conceivable that the way you've been handling notice of violations is perfectly legal? We strongly request that you allow us to go forward with the application. Let us close the hearing tonight, uh, and move forward. We'll get an issue, we'll get more, uh, uh, analysis of this legal issue. And if it turns out that, uh, you know, the application is approved and the intervenor wants to take an appeal, so be it. But that assumes the intervenor's gonna take an appeal. We've already heard that he supports this, this issue. And he wants the remediation plan implemented as soon as possible. So perhaps he will not take an appeal. And if he does, we will defend the appeal, and I believe we will be successful. Just to conclude, thank you again for your remarks, but my concluding, uh, remarks are as following, as follows. By going forward with the pending application and approving it, you will have fully vetted the plan now and will allow the remediation to commence immediately, even if an appeal is taken. By following that course, you will be benefiting the wetlands and advancing the wetlands remediation now. And you will likely preserve your longstanding process for handling notices of violations. And your process has generally been very efficient and expeditions. So I'm hopeful that you will allow us to, uh, conclude our presentation, close the hearing tonight, not deliberate until, uh, Attorney Schellenberg gets back to you. And, uh, again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Attorney Finn. Attorney Schellenberg, um, Attorney Finn touched on it, but can you, you're muted though, by the way, can you explain to the commission some of the ramifications if, you know, um, Mr. Green's presumption is correct? I don't know if I said that right, but, you know.
Well, if, if, if he is correct, and in fact, there is not authority for the commission to have to, um, proceed in this manner, um, I do want the commission to understand that anything it's done in the past, uh, that's not going to be revisited. It's, it's, it's not like everything's opened up. Um, because even if there were mistakes made in the past, if nobody appealed, what's done is done. Um, the question is whether this process is the correct process when in response to an NOB, a property owner is seeking permission to conduct regulated activities. So the question is whether a permit application has to be filed. And Attorney Finn is correct. If, um, I advise that a permit application is required in this instance, then it wouldn't just apply to this particular situation. It, it would necessarily change the way the commission conducts itself, um, in terms of issuing NOBs and then having property owners come in and, and respond to them. So it does potentially have a, 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 um, uh, wider ranging effect. But the point is, we're, I am trying to get it right for the commission. Ultimately, it is my job to advise the commission as to what I believe is the proper course of action based on the general statutes with, which ultimately control regardless of what the regulations say. Um, and, and obviously, assuming that regulations are authorized to then interpret those regulations. Um, so it, it is a purely legal issue. Um, and as Attorney Finn said, I, we have not had the chance to do a thorough research of this. There might not be a case on point. Um, you know, we will just have to see where this goes. So, uh, you know, I'm happy to answer any other questions that commissioners might have at this point. Um, I think it is in your discretion as I, whether you, you want to continue to hear this, hear from the applicant tonight, I don't have a problem with that. If that's the way the commission wants to proceed, um, it's up, it's really up to you.
Anybody on the commission have, wanna ask Attorney Schellenberg or again, any clarification on this matter? Speak freely.
I guess I'm a little confused that the question we're being asked is, do we wanna finish hearing this and possibly close it tonight? But then hold off on deliberations until next meeting? Or what's the option of not hearing anymore? Um, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm a little muddy as to what it is being
I, I think the option is to continue to hear this, potentially decide that the presentation is done and that you're ready to deliberate, but hold off on deliberating until I can, so that I can advise the commission. Because if I come back and say, I agree with the intervenor and a permit application is required, um, I wouldn't want the commission to go ahead and make a decision on the application. If I disagree, then at that point, it, it would be fine to go ahead and deliberate and, and make a decision. You know, Attorney Finn is right. At, at that point, I don't, the intervenor might still appeal. Um, you know, I, I, my opinion could ultimately be found to be incorrect by a judge. Um, but again, it's, it's my job to advise the commission as to what I feel is the correct procedure based on my research and how I interpret the law. That's all I can do. Uh, the other option the commission has is to table the matter until I give you an opinion. And then depending which way it goes, you're either going to proceed on this application or the applicant would have to file a permit application and, and start with that um, as a new application. Does that answer your question?
I think so. So the difference would be either that we would consider this an application in its own right and, and rule on it next time. Or we consider it not a real application and basically start over again as a, as a, an official permit application? Am I
The, if I agree with the intervenor's position, then there would have to be a new application filed. The applicant would have to file a permit application, which has obviously different notice requirements and, um, you know, time limits associated with it, et cetera. It's, it's not the same type of application. I mean, the presentation in terms of what the applicant is looking to do may not be substantially different. It's just procedurally a different animal, so to speak.
Uh, Chairman, Chairman Romano, I just have two quick points. I'm sorry, Mr. Stewart, can I jump in for just two minutes? I, I'll take that.
I can help you, so maybe you don't want to.
No, I, 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 I just want, Kevin's presentation tonight was gonna be, is gonna be brief, and I think the continuity of finishing this makes sense. That's all I'm gonna say. Sorry, Mr. Stewart. Sorry, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Chris Stewart.
Yeah, I think they're here, the applicant's ready, let's just let them say their piece. Hopefully they can finish tonight. Then when they're finished, then we can determine if we're going to close the hearing. I don't think there's any difference with keeping the hearing open one more. We can close it the next meeting at the beginning of the hearing. They're here, let's just listen to what they have to say. It's not going to change anything.
We all agree? All right, we're all, we're all, we're all thumbs up. All right, great. So, did what we had to do, and luckily, this is going in the right direction. So, Kevin, if you may, or will, whatever, tired.
Yes. Thank you, members of the commission, for the record. My name's Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solely Engineering. Our office is located right here in Monroe at 501 Main Street. Um, I do have, we had some great discussion at the last meeting, and I do have, uh, just some.
Kevin, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I just remembered, um, I believe Commissioner Mastoroff has to state on the record whether he listened to the prior proceedings because he wasn't here.
Yes, I watched the last meeting, the video.
Okay, so you're up to date on, um, all the proceedings at this point?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, go ahead.
Thank you.
No worries. Um, uh, I was wondering if Donna could maybe, uh, make me a presenter, I could just share my screen and just run through some of the, the, um, additional analysis we conducted after our last, uh, last hearing and discussion with the commission. Great. So, um, during the meeting last week, we had, you know, we went through a number of issues that Attorney Green mentioned. Um, I think we talked through a lot of those at length, and then we went through some pretty lengthy discussions regarding alternatives. And, um, you know, I, I, I do want to thank Commissioner Spence, because I know she put a lot of time and effort into trying to, to coming up with some other ways to evaluate the site and ways to restore the watershed. So I kind of wanted to just go real briefly through, again, some history of the property and the project, and then talk about some analysis we did in response to her, um, her suggestions. So, so as the commission's aware, just for everyone's, uh, refreshing, um, this, the applicant had previously made an application to import approximately 977,000 cubic yards of material, which would take 10 years to do, which would fully restore the watershed to the easterly wetland system on the property. And, um, what that did was it pulled the, uh, the slope, um, to contribute to that wetland further away, so it was entirely within the Vernal Pool envelope, and it pulled the level pad, um, that's proposed on the northern end of the site, so that it allowed for this wetland to be hydrated north towards the center, um, as consistent with how it was hydrated previously. This application was denied, and as part of that application, there were some, the commission gave good feedbacks to the applicant that there were some of the major concerns were to reduce the amount of fill needed, um, uh, reduce the duration that would be required to achieve the goals, and, um, to, uh, potentially even look at reducing the area of the watershed to be restored. So through, uh, through some informal discussions and some, uh, pretty extensive work, we provided and proposed the application that's currently before you. This reduces the import down to, um, 493,000 cubic yards of material, which would take only five years to be completed. This proposes not only rehydration with, um, superficial drainage from the northern portion to the, to the northern portion of the site, but also with a well which is rehydrating and pumping wetlands to the entire length of the system so that it can be rehydrated. Um, and I will say that, that rehydration had been approved, it's been implemented, and the commission heard from Bill Kenny at the last hearing that it's working. And we're seeing, starting to see some shallow groundwater in that system. So that, the mechanical means is working, and we believe that the mechanical means in, in concert with the additional filling will be, uh, very beneficial, and we believe it's the right way to move this project and this property forward. Um, uh, a lot of the discussions we had last week also were, at the last hearing, was the way that this is, um, designed, the superficial drainage is kind of only reaching the, the northernmost edge of this wetland. So what we did is we took a much closer look to see if we could create a swell to further, uh, distribute that stormwater to run north to south, to again, feed that wetland a little bit lower into the, into the system. Um, and what we have is we were able to create some, uh, detailed design and look at that evaluation in this area here, and we've been able to determine that we can provide a swell which will, um, which can collect all this superficial runoff from this pad, you know, directed towards the swell, which is, which starts up here, and then routed towards here, which would then be collected, and it will run, um, from this point all the way down adjacent to the wetland from north to south to feed into this wetland in approximately this location here. So this brings us all the way down to, um, almost the same location as we had previously proposed, so that this allows for all of that water that runs off this proposed, um, hi- higher pad, closest independent, to be collected, run north to south along the upwind area. So this is in between the face of the cliff and the wetland itself, and we can, and, but these contours are actually micrograded, so we're actually showing six inch contours here to show how they can construct this swell without any other direct wetland impact, without, and work entirely within the constraints of that existing edge that's there, and, and direct all this stormwater to the lower reaches. So I think that, that, um, I think this, this, we've been able to do the analysis, and we can demonstrate that we can actually do this and achieve this goal, um, which we think will, will considerably help with, you know, um, making sure that the superficial runoff will, will feed the wetland and the Vernal Pool. Um, and we're excited about that. So we were able to, 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 to meet that goal, we've done the design, and we can, we can incorporate that into our plans, and we are incorporating that into our plans, and we'd like, uh, the commission to look at that favorably. Um, the other component that we talked about was, um, or one of the other suggestions that Lois made had to do with the, um, grading along this, and potentially, some of her suggestions were to potentially look at, you know, can we, can we also fill along this edge to see if we can permanently establish some more buffer and then, um, uh, more watershed kind of close, just in close proximity to where that system is. So when we went and looked at, um, what we had done before, we wanted to understand precisely how much more fill that would, that would, that would be required and how much time it would add to the process. So we did an analysis, and we looked at, um, grading through here, and what, what this basically does is it keeps the pad in the same spot as we have it today, but if we were to add all of this fill, which would then essentially be, um, you know, filled against the existing face, and then raised up beyond the limit of the buffer, which we had previously proposed, and then chase that back down. And what that does is that actually requires an additional 295,000, 250 cubic yards of material, which would add approximately three years to the, to the, to the process, to the, to the restoration duration, um, which, you know, we don't necessarily think is, is necessary or warranted, especially because we've been able to demonstrate the, the ability to put that swell in. And, and secondly, the other concerning, or the other concern with this approach would be, this area here I highlighted in blue, that represents about three and a half acres of developable area, which would be lost if we also added this additional finger of filling. And, you know, I think as we talked about at, at several of these meetings, um, the, the owner owns this property, he wants to get it to be a contributing industrial property to help support the Monroe taxes. And while this restoration effort is, is, is going to be quite costly to achieve that goal, we need to make sure that the, um, that the, that it's a financially, uh, uh, reasonable exercise, or frankly, nothing will happen here. Um, so we think that the, while the previous plan that it, that was, would do exactly what this does, it would take 10 years, the commission said, no, uh, we want something that would take less, we've come up with something that could take less. And with that, I think our, our current plan is the appropriate one, and the loss of the developable area, and, you know, the very, um, you know, we think that in the added time that would, that would be needed, we don't think that this is a, is the, is the correct way to move forward, and we respectfully request the commission to consider our current application with the addition of that, of that swell up top, because we believe that's the best way to move this property forward. Um, the second, the second and only other item that I wanted to bring up again and discuss with the commission had to do with the bond request. Um, that was discussed, and our bond estimate that we submitted, and I'm just going to share for the commission, you know, this is the bond form that Scott included as part of his last, um, comment letter. Um, we had come up with a number of 153, $143,000 for the bond estimate, Scott came back at 740, and there were a couple of items in here that were, were pretty costly. And, you know, we looked at, one of the biggest ones was the cost to topsoil, seed, fertilize, and mulch the entire disturbed area. We had come in with 10 cents a square foot, Scott says he thinks it needs to be 30 cents a square foot. We went back and we looked to see if there was a way that we could kind of justify either a lower, um, unit price, or really kind of to revisit that area that needs to be stabilized as part of the site stabilization and restoration if the developer was ever to walk away. So what we did was, um, we looked at the soil erosion sediment control plan, and what Scott was doing was he was taking the entirety of the limit of disturbance and saying, that land in its entirety, even the area that's not in the regulated area, is the 1.6 million square feet. So that actually includes, you know, area at the top of the hill, um, pretty much the entire extent. Um, and when we looked at it, you know, I kind of took a closer look, and I said, well, is, is all of that really disturbed, and would all of that really be topsoil? And what we came up with was if, let's just say the developer walked away and the commission had to call this bond to go in and perform this site stabilization and restoration on their own. Um, this isn't a performance bond, so it doesn't, it wouldn't mean the town would be actually doing the work, importing the fill, placing the fill, anything like that. It would just be trying to get the area to be stabilized and, and stabilized. So when we actually looked at it, the actual area that would need to be stabilized, that would need that topsoil, it wouldn't actually be that entire 1.6 square, million square feet, because, you know, it would be the area that's disturbed, which, you know, along the face through here, but you're not going to topsoil and seed the pond, that pond would probably stay in perpetuity. So if, so I think that area can be much smaller, and then when you actually look at the area that's in the regulated area, which is what the commission has the ability to require a bond for, um, that number's actually smaller. Um, and I'm highlighting now the actual, uh, regulated area that we're dealing with. Um, so this is a regulated area from the wetland on the left, on the east side of the side, west side of the side, excuse me, and then this is the, the Vernal Pool envelope. So this is the area that actually would be restored. And when you look at that area breakdown, it's actually only, um, 780,000 square feet. So even if we were to take the same 30 cents per square foot and apply it to that 780,000 square foot area, it would considerably bring that cost down for that effort. Um, so what we, you know, we, we have a, a revised estimate, this is $417,000. We think that this is, we, we basically accepted and adopted everything else that Scott had recommended in his estimate, but we did look at that area for the, the disturbed area that, that again, if the commission called this bond, they would be simply trying to stabilize and restore the site. Um, I don't necessarily agree with Scott on some of these other numbers, because I'm not sure what, um, you know, he has $45,000 in here just for creating diversion swales. I don't think the commission or the town would actually do that, I think they would just try to get the, grade it out and seeded, but, but, uh, but the main issue is that I don't think that you should be carrying, um, for topsoil and seeding for 1.6 million square feet when you're not going to topsoil and seed a pond, and there's some other areas that, um, they'll require that same level of effort. So, and I think to kind of dig into this a lot closer, you can, you could, there's probably even other ways to, to, to adjust this figure, but we will, we definitely, again, as we stated at the last hearing, we're trying to get to a place where we can have something that's reasonable, that's not going to create undue costs or hardship to the owner, so they can actually try to get this moving and get this area restored in the much, in as, in as expedient manner as possible. Um, you know, I, I, those were, that was really the extent of what I wanted to talk about. I think we had, we've had some very, very great discussion throughout the duration of this, of this application. Um, I'm an engineer, I'm not an attorney, but, you know, I believe that the commission has the right to create whatever application they see, they deem as appropriate, depending on what's, what the issue is, and, you know, as part of the denial, you said, come back with restoration application. We brought in a restoration application. As much as I enjoy being with you every Wednesday night or every other Wednesday night, I, I prefer not to start this application over. You know, I, I know they say the third time's the charm, but I really don't want to go through this one more time. You know, we'd like to really start seeing some meaningful effort here and getting the site to be in a better place, um, than where it is today and where it was left. Uh, so, you know, with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions that the commission may have. Um, and hopefully we can, you know, again, solicit any other feedback that you may have, but hopefully we, I think we've been able to address everything we can, and we think that this is the right, the right path forward for this property.
Thank you, Kevin. I'll start with my first question. So the area that you just described with the blue, right, which would be the restoration area that would need to be, that would be required, is there, are there stockpiles of material that are going to be used to fill in the hole in that blue area?
Uh, there are, yes.
So, wouldn't it be logical to say that those wouldn't be left there? They would be brought into the hole, because why, how are you going to topsoil a mountain of dirt, right? It would be more advantageous to move that fill into the hole we're supposed to go, whether it's you or, whether it's the property owner or the next person, or the person who's called in to do the restoration if you, you know, go, decides to take a trip to the moon and not come back, you know, whatever the case may be. So I, I just want to try to maybe stop, you know, get some information now, how that would actually really play out to help us decide on, on your proposal for the bond.
Yeah. So, so I think, I think the, the thing we have to remember is that if, the, the bond, the, the purpose of a wetlands bond is site stabilization and restoration. So it's trying to get to the site to a, a place that's stable if in fact, an applicant starts site disturbance and then leaves it a big mess. This site's already a big mess. And the, the whole purpose of the application is to restore it. So if the, if the, if the developer posts this bond and then says, you know what, I'm moving to, to the island and leaves this in its current condition, um, the town of Monroe and with the bond is, is, only has a bond to, to stabilize the property. It's, it's not a performance bond. So the town wouldn't actually be moving these stockpiles and placing it in the hole and, and compacting it in lifts and getting it up and out of the water elevation. So, so my thought was, you know.
I just stopped you for a second, but my question is, so, so, so someone's going to put six inches of topsoil over those piles of, of earth? It's not really possible.
I, 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 I would agree with you, actually. I would agree with you that, 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 um, that area should probably be even less than the 780,000 square feet that I mentioned before, because, because again, I'm just going to draw this regulated area, right? So we're not going into the pond, this is the face. And this area here is a big old mound of quarry screenings, there's a stockpile here, there are a number of mounds and stockpiles within here that would probably even further reduce that area. So when we're trying to come up with the right number from a bond amount, we don't want to make it, um, onerous, we want to make it reasonable.
I just, you basically kind of, so you're basically saying that a rest, a, a, a legitimate restoration would allow those piles to exist as your cone, or whatever you want to call the shape, the mountain could exist uncovered, unstabilized, as long as the area around it is stabilized? Because it's almost like.
I would agree with that, yeah.
It's like a catch 22, how could you spread a topsoil if you have a mountain of dirt there, and the mountain of dirt is only going to go in the hole? So you say it's not a performance bond, but if that had to be actually the way it had to go, where you actually had to get it so that you could spread topsoil over the entire area, uh, part of this application in the blue, then you're kind of like, got, two things have to happen at the same time, and one of them is, would be having to fill in that hole. Or dozing it all out to like, you know, five feet high, which would just be asinine for anybody to do. Or dozing it all out to like, you know, five feet high, which would just be asinine for anybody to do. That's why, that's where I'm seeing like the, the issue, but, all right.
I I agree, I agree with your train of thought. And again, I think that hopefully, uh, hopefully just adds to the, to the the reasonableness discussion on what's an appropriate stabilization restoration bond for the effort that we're talking about.
Okay. Thank you, that's all for me, anybody else? Richard Spence?
All right, it takes a while to unmute myself. I have um, a bunch of questions. Um. We seem to be forgetting that this is an enormous application. It's not just the bond, it's not just the rehydration wetlands. There's also a very large grading, filling and grading component that's happening in the balance of the site, which really hasn't been addressed a whole lot. And um, there are other wetlands on this, on this site that could be affected by this, by this grading and so on, that is being proposed. I just want us to remember that it's not just that very small corner of the plan, it's the entire plan that we're looking at. And there's um, that that's just one, kind of an aside, that I want everybody to remember that. There's a lot more to this plan than just that one little, one little area. Um, there were several things that I had asked for last meeting that um, I haven't seen yet. And that are really very important to what I think is the success, long-term success of this plan. Um, we talked about the well, that would be my first, uh, not attack, my my first bullet. Uh, we talked about the well, the the proposed digging of the new well. We have no um, details on that, we don't know how deep it's going to be. The water has never been tested in that area for uh, efficacy, I think efficacy. Um, we don't, you you mentioned a hydrogeologist report, but there hasn't been one. And we don't know that we're not recirculating the water from underneath or draining the wetlands. Into this well and then recirculating it up on the top and providing a huge um, circulation issue that shouldn't be there. We don't know that because we don't have a report on it. And um.
Well, we.
This is just what I wanted to say first. Um, I wanted, we also talked about monitoring it for, for its quality, for contaminants. We don't know that. And yet we are being asked to approve a minimum of a five-year plan on um, things that we don't have any, any factors on. That, that, that is kind of um, to me, it's a problem. And there was something else I was going to say about that, it's in my mind, so I'll have to come back to it. That, that was number one. Um. Kevin, do you want to address that?
I I I would, just because when when we submitted our remediation application on May the sixth. Included in that application was a hydrogeology report conducted by WSP, which was done as part of the previous application. And that included deep well tests and um, we also included a, an environmental report. A subsurface and stockpile investigation, which included groundwater uh, chemical analysis of both surface water and deeper well water around the property. Um, and the hydrogeologic report, which while we we've submitted it for the record, we didn't provide um, a presentation on that report. It is part of the record. Presentation um, that was previously given, basically what that does is the hydrogeologist Ken Taylor from WSP concluded. That the deeper groundwater was not and is not hydraulically connected to the shallow groundwater that feeds that easterly wetland system. So that was, there is report in the record, there was analysis done that showed both the water was clean from a chemical analysis standpoint. And that there was a disconnection between the deeper bedrock wells and the deeper uh, groundwater. And the shallow groundwater, which provides um, hydration for this easterly wetland system. So I just wanted to say that that information is in the record, there is technical analysis included in the record regarding those two aspects. So I, while I agree with, you know, I agree that it's important for the commission to have all the information when they make this decision. I do believe that information is available to the commission and is in the record. Um, our plans do show to, and call out to install that um, you know, that deeper bedrock well up in this area. That well will have, will will and can be tested, those results can be provided to the commission as a condition of approval to ensure that. The um, water coming out of the well before it's connected to the rehydration system has um, is is of the correct chemical composition. Um, the well that is currently rehydrating the well and had been tested and it was proven to be clean. And that information is included in the record and the report prepared by WSP. So um, I I I think that there is good information there and the condition, and the commission can also include a condition that says. Prior to connecting this well to that rehydration system, we have to provide a chemical analysis to ensure that it is clean and it won't have any adverse impact on that uh, that wetland system. And I'd recommend the commission to include that as a condition.
I stand corrected, I I only thought that that was, um, I didn't realize that the hydrogeologist report was in there. On that, and I do remember you discussing the fact that it was hydrologically separated, but not during any hearings, but this application. So that was important to be actually on the record. Um, okay, there's um, I don't know about anybody else, but I would love to see this pipe, this pump in in action. We're being asked to approve a pumping situation for forever, and we've never even seen what it looks like. We've never seen the result of it or, I mean, I I personally would like a sidewalk, I would like to see how this this thing looks. It's, one thing I'm sure is quite different when you actually experience it personally. Um, where's the truck, truck washing station? I, it was mentioned in several places, but I don't find it on any plan.
So it will be, it'll, as with a lot of sites under construction, a lot of the SDC measures are kind of living and breathing things and they move and they adjust as areas are stabilized and restored. The truck washing station would be, would be installed and constructed down at the southern end of the site, just advance, in in advance of the um, construction entrance. So that would be located here and as the the filling activities and operations, you know, proceed and different areas are established and stabilized, that may move um, in relation with that. But it is included and it's and it's referenced in our our um, our plans, it's referenced in our uh, as some of the erosion sediment control measures. Um, and it is something that would be incorporated into the.
Okay, um, there is these, just kind of general questions right now. On page two of two, I'm I'm wondering if it's point twenty, um, there's a stone wall. On.
Caller seven, mute yourself or someone mute caller seven. Where's caller seven? Is that Clark? Donna, can you mute caller seven? Donna, where's Donna going?
I mean, who did you need me to mute?
Caller seven.
Oh, okay.
There we go, okay, go ahead, proceed.
Thank you, sorry about that. Um, there, there's a um, indication of a stone wall on the south-central part of Independence. What's happening with that wall, is it staying or is it um, being moved?
We're not proposing to remove any stone walls. Um, I'm not sure exactly where you're, where you're referencing. Um, but I don't think there's any stone walls within the limits of disturbance or the limit of activity that we're proposing.
Okay. Good, it was on page, it was, they said it was called page two of two, which was then here.
Oh, on the survey.
Yes, property survey, I'm sorry. That's where it is.
Yeah, that's, that's actually, that's actually off our property and it's in the Independence right away and it continues over to the property to the northeast.
Are we talking about the same wall? This is right.
I'm not sure.
Anyway, um, I also was hoping to get a narrative on your restoration sequencing. What happens, what portion of the property when? So that we have some way of just knowing what's going on, other than just waiting five years and say, well, there it is. It would be good to to have a, a written plan of what we can expect. By year, perhaps, we we expect to have this much done by this much time and this is the area we're going to be concentrating on or that, that kind of thing. Right now, everything is completely up in the air and we have no way of knowing what it is that, what we can expect. So I was hoping for that narrative. Um. This is a, this is a question.
Just to, just to, just to, just to respond to that quick, we can try to knock them out as you go. I think, you know, the, we we've talked at length about the intent of how to do this, we're going to start in the back, we want to fill that first and then fill as we go up. And then once we finish on the lower level, we then finish up on the top above on Independence. What I, maybe I'd recommend is the commission may want to consider requiring uh, periodic reports back to the commission. And if they'd like, you could also have a narrative via condition of approval to provide that as part of a, as part of a condition of approval.
I'd like to see the narrative, however, before, before it's, so as a condition, we wouldn't.
Uh, Lois, I I gotta, I want to kind of give you a counterpoint to that. I don't think that as a commission, we could tell a developer how they're going to sequence their job and how they're going to get it done. So the narrative would help, but how could it be consequential to our decision? Because we can't go back and ask them to change anything.
What it does is it, it allows for um, our staff to go and see what, how the progressing contains what was, uh, what was proposed. That is all.
Of course, of course, you're correct. But but it shouldn't, you haven't included in the application, so it's on the record, it's part of the decision. But we should be able to get that after, you know, or during deliberation because we're not, we can't ask them to alter it. It's not like the, it's not like the layout plan here. It's up to them how they're going to sequence it. We can't say we want you to fill the top first and then do the bottom after.
But it would be nice to know. Do you remember the shocked look on everybody's faces when I asked when the pump was going to be in, when, when the pump was going to be installed on the last plan? And it was like the very last thing and everybody was like, oh, it was a complete, a completely, I don't want to surprise us. I just like to know what the, what the the general plan is. And hearing it on the record is all fine and dandy. And tell me how many of us in five years are going to go back and listen to the record again to find it. So having it written as part of the record is, I mean, it's, it's a fairly simple request and um, I just.
I understand, there's no problem requesting it, but it can be a condition of approval.
Okay.
Right? I mean.
Um.
Well, we we have agreed in the previous application, the water has to run continuously for, so they can't even take a pause and say, well, we're, we're, we're going to shut this off until we drill the new well. Because that permit has to stave out, so we're covered in that regard. We can't tell them, you know, how fast or slow or when they're going to, where they're going to start. So I I understand what you mean, have it part of the record, have it be part of monitoring. But why is that, how can we make, how can we have anything to say about it? Except their discretion of how they're going to get the work done and how they're going to sequence it, as long as at the end of five years or wherever it may be, it's all done properly. And along the way, we're getting a look at it every, I think, every three months.
Hmm, okay, all right, I'll, I'll. Um. All right, this one has been. Regaining, um, on the original proposal where you said there was only nine hundred and thirty-three, is it nine hundred and thirty-three, nine seventy-seven thousand dollars in the start of fill. How much of that fill, this is the, I think there was the original, the one that was, was reduced from this amount, okay? How much of that nine seventy-seven was going to be put toward? The restoration of the wetland? And I guess the building up of of Independence.
Well, I mean, that was the import required to achieve the finished grades.
Right.
So I guess all of it.
Was was allocated, for instance, for for Independence and how much was allocated for the grading on the lower portion of sixty-four Cambridge?
We didn't, I didn't, we didn't break it out, um, we're obviously doing a lot less grading of Independ, of Independence now, um, but I don't think we broke it out by property.
The reason I ask is that we did cut down the amount of fill and as a result, we were able to cut down the. Me, that the fill all came from the restoration portion and none of it came from the grading or development portion, whatever you wanted to, uh, whatever you want to call it. Um. It's.
Well, part of, part of, part of the restoration, part of the, part of the restoration is to make sure that the site positively drains out. So that we're not creating a low-lying area anymore. So part of the restoration requires the filling of the lower portion, so that that'll provide positive drainage out towards the south, towards the 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 aquatic. So all of that area still needed to be filled, if not, we're just going to have a low-lying area that's going to collect water forever.
But to start at, could the, the northerly portion of sixty-four Cambridge? Be at a lower elevation than you're proposing, you're proposing four forty before you start the slope to go up to forty-four. But just being at like four hundred and twenty-something or four thirty. If you go down by where the the construction entrance is, what's that contour?
Yep. Four twelve.
Four twelve, right.
We have to get from four twelve, we have to drain, we have to create positive drainage all the way down here.
But do you really need thirty-eight, uh, twenty-eight feet to do it of elevation?
Yes, we do.
Because it seems to me if you were to cut down on some of that slope and make it a lesser slope, but still a slope, that you'd also be able to reduce the fill that way and fill on the restoration. I'm, I'm, I'm.
We're, we're proposing very shallow grades. This is, this is a two-foot change in elevation from here to here. And that's over a hundred feet, so we're proposing almost like one and a half percent slope superficially. To grade less than that, we're not going to have positive drainage. We're incredibly shallow through this area.
Okay. I did have more. Oh, um, the landscaping plans. On, on each of them, on the note. You refer to plans rate um, from twelve-seven slash fifteen and revise through August of. and revised through August of twenty sixteen, approved in nine, in September of twenty fifteen. But you refer to them and they're not part of the plan set. Um, the landscaping plans are there, but none, and the plant names are there, but none of the names are allocated to the symbols that are represented. And that's on all three of those sheeps or four of those sheeps. So, um, you would, we would need to have that plan incorporated into this plan so that they wouldn't have to go back to, um, twenty fifteen to, to, to see what it is that we're supposed to be doing. I guess that's just really.
For the, 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 the approved, the approved, um, wetland race, wetland restoration efforts that are shown on sheet two point six-two are approved as part of the section four re-subdivision. So those plants are installed as part of that approval. So you shouldn't be using these documents to supersede that work because that work's covered under that permit. I don't think, we're, we're showing that as more for informational purposes, for the commission's, um, knowledge. But the, the, the planting associated with that should be on, are tied to that approval.
Did you say that was part of a re-subdivision plan?
That was, that was approved as part of the re-subdivision of section four, which was the creation of this cul-de-sac for Cambridge Drive. And as part of that approval, we had this detention basin and some wetland, uh, upland enhancements here and here. And we just simply showed that information on this plan set for the commission's edification.
Okay. Are there any other subsequent plans that are still in effect? Are still valid that affect that area?
No, just the re-subdivision plans from, uh, from section four.
Okay. Um, the other thing I had asked for, and then I'm still hoping to get is a report from the Wetlands project, Bill Kenny, for, um, benchmarks to decide, to help us decide that what he is using as criteria for what is considered working. We still, everybody says the pump is working. Wonderful. That means working is, it's physically pumping. I had asked last time very specifically for a written benchmark plan. What can we expect at what point? What does working mean? When do obligate species? When should they return if this is working? And what should the levels be? What should the levels of water? I realize that they're dramatically oriented and seasonally changeable. But we were, I was hoping for something that's a little bit more than just, yeah, the pump is, it's there pumping, but that doesn't mean that it's actually doing what we want it to do. And I would like to see what he's using as benchmarks. So, and I had asked for it very specifically in the last hearing. I think it's important to have that in the plan.
Good evening. This is Bill Kenny.
Bill, you want to handle that one?
Sure. Um, we, we have considered this since the last meeting and, um, there's a great document available. It's published by the New England District of the Army Corps of Engineers. It's the, uh, New England District Compensatory Mitigation Guidance. Um, so we're going to be using that as a, as a guideline, but generally what we're going to do is, uh, with regard to performance standards, determine, one, will this area be a wetland? So we'll be monitoring the depth, the groundwater saturation, depth of the water table and duration, uh, that that occurs during the growing season. We'll also be, um, monitoring, um, well, that, that'll be the primary thing because we already have wetland vegetation that's present. Um, but typically you would look at three parameters, the soils, the soil is already exists, the plants already exist. That's why this is such a great opportunity and really just waiting to be saved. Uh, but the third thing is, is getting the water back and that's, uh, spelled out in the mitigation guidance, uh, publication. It's dated September seventh of two thousand and sixteen. Um, so we'll follow the, uh, the standards that are in that publication with regard to monitoring the, uh, wetland hydrologic conditions. And also what is, which is very helpful is that we have wetland four just to the east. So that's our benchmark. Uh, we can compare this wetland to that. It, we don't, you don't have much of a better benchmark than, than we have here, uh, when comparing the wetland that we're restoring to a, 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 another wetland that is undisturbed and this is so close by. So we'll first monitor these to determine if they, uh, meet the definition of a wetland. And then we will also look at them for, uh, vernal pool habitat. And, and that's really similar to what's been happening ongoing, uh, where we will go out during the breeding season and, and document whether there's the presence of, um, egg masses. Um, so the sign of breeding, evidence of breeding and then evidence of development, whether, um, the eggs hatch, have time to hatch and, and, um, salamanders or frogs have time to develop to a mature state where they can then make their way out to the forest, to the adjacent forest. So, uh, we'll be doing that and that guidance document from the Army Corps talks, it spells out, uh, you do these inspections at least, uh, twice a year and you submit reports annually. You talk about, um, remedial actions that you may have taken where you make adjustments to, uh, improve things. Um, you have photos and, and maps of your data accumulation. Um, and submit your report annually before December fifteenth.
Is there a copy of that available to be made for the record, into the record?
Yes, it's available online. Um, I can, um, I could email a link to, to you or to the agency's, uh, secretary.
Is it a sizable document?
It is one hundred and thirty-eight pages. We don't, not every page is critical to this, but there are, um, a handful of pages that are, that are applicable. The document covers many different types of wetlands, includes streams, watercourses, ponds, coastal areas, inland areas.
I like this. Um, it shouldn't be the responsibility of our staff to download these and get copies to the record. It should be the responsibility of the applicant to go through there. We do, at least get the pages that are applicable from your report.
Sure, we'll do that.
Incorporate, incorporate into the record. That would be very handy.
I wanted to add a thought about some discussion earlier in the evening about the bond and stabilization of stockpiles. Typically you look to stabilize soil stockpiles, but much of the stockpiles that are on site are variations of different sizes of stone. And actually stone is often used as a stabilization measure itself. So I think many of those, uh, stockpiles don't warrant, uh, stabilization because generally they're, they're stabilized just by their nature.
Um, let me see. If you want to go on to somebody else, Kevin, um, keep while I.
Anybody else have, uh, questions for Kevin Stoli or the applicant or Bill Kenny? Commissioner Hall, go ahead.
Yes. Um, like Lois, I have concerns about the northern well, the new well. And I have just gone back through all the materials I have and have not found the detail, the documented detail in the submission. Maybe Kevin, you could point me to where I can find the write-up for that.
Well, it's, it's called out on sheet two point two-three and two point two-zero. It says install, you know, groundwater well to, uh, facilitate rehydration. I think that's, um, we don't have, you know, it's a, it's a standard bedrock groundwater well. Um, the, you know, if you were to call any well company and say, I want to put a well in, they'd do the same thing generally. Um, and it would match the well that's already been drilled on site. Um.
So, so you're, this has the location of the well, the specific location, or you have not determined that yet?
Yeah, we have determined the specific location and it is called out on the drawings.
Okay. And you said two point two-three and what was the second one?
Um, two, uh, two point two-three. It's called out in detail.
Okay. Uh, that was.
You know, it calls out, it calls out the well, it calls out the, the manifold and pump for the irrigation, the timers. Um, it has all that specific information.
Okay, very good.
Right in the corner of that.
Yeah, I have no other questions, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Kevin.
Um, thank you.
Anybody else? Other commissioners, anything? Commissioner Spence, you're back.
I'm back. Um, I wanted, I'm still going back to the liner being on the developable portion of the property. I still think that's a bad idea because regardless of drainage, hydrologic mixers, separators, sand filters and all of those other things, there still can be many features of that liner. I really would like to see the liner removed from the developable portions of the property and have that portion be untouched so that there is no opportunity. Now I think that there was one of the, one of the proposals that was brought previously on the application that was denied, before Kevin gets a chance to say it, um, there was a proposal for a, a, a lot line configuration and for a drainage pattern that was very similar to what I'm talking about. In fact, I believe it was the very, very first one. The very first one that had the nine hundred and, or the million cubic yards or whatever it was. But the configuration was what I, I was appreciating. And that's not the first one. The very first one had a much more severe grade from the wetland to just about the border of, um, to the lot line. Yes, that's the area, but it had a much more severe grade. There was no, there was very little liner on the basic part of the property. That seemed to me to be a lot better, um, plan because it wouldn't be, it, it wouldn't be breached as, or the opportunity wouldn't be there to breach it as steadily. And it would be doing its job without having a building over it, without having it to go through parking lot, water and all this other. It would be much more, um, separated. It would be much more natural. It wouldn't have the same effect as, I think, as, as the plan that is being proposed. And I wanted to, you know, just put that out there on the record. Also, um, we talked about three and a half acres of developable property that we would lose by doing what this application is supposed to be doing, which is restoring the wetlands. Um, three point five acres out of this entire property is really quite small. And this is a remit, rest, restoration application to restore the wetlands. Now we have had several opportunities and several plans that would do a better job than a pump, which is very dubious long-term. And I know Mr. Carp says he will be back in front of us and I have no doubt about that. But I'm talking long-term. If that pump dies and the owner, whoever the owner is at the time, does not follow through because we will not be able to check the conditions of wetlands at that time. I'm sure in five, seven, 10 years, Mr. Kenny will not be going back every quarter to see how the wetlands are doing. The pump dies, the wetland. If the liner were put in such a place where it did not necessitate pumping, if the, the fill were placed in such a place that did not necessitate pumping, that could allow for permanent sustainable watershed drainage to that wetland. And that, that, that's, it would, it would provide sustainable watershed to that, to that wet, well. And that is my, that is my biggest point. That's my biggest concern. That's what you said.
Two quick, two quick points to that. I can respond. So the, you're right, the initial submission that we did submit, which I'm going to drag over to the screen right now. We had a much steeper slope through that buffer area to establish that as a more protected area. But this resulted in a finished pad of four eighty-three and it required a considerable amount of fill. And in all of our responses to, to, to questions that concern rate, concerns raised, we reduced that and now our pad is at four sixty. So we've reduced the height by twenty-three feet, which reduces the slope through this, through this buffer area. Um, so that was one. And then again, I agree with you. Trying to create a rehydration of this wetland that, that would completely restore the watershed just superficially was, is, we believe is a good alternative for the site. And we proposed it and it was denied. So we are now here with another alternative. If the commission agrees that this is a better way, I think the commission could, uh, approve this, the original application. It's going to require 10 years and a million yards of fill. But our current plan addresses a lot of the other concerns that were raised. And I believe that with the implementation and the introduction of the swell, um, that I discussed earlier, which I'll show you again in a second, um, we're able to provide that so that there's going to be a rehydration of that, um, area just through the superficial drainage of the new watershed created. So this is going to allow again, all that water to flow and get into the, the southern reach of that wetland. So it doesn't have to just rely on the well. And we believe this will be successful.
Well, I still think that there are other ways that are, that could, that would satisfy the desires of all of us, at least mostly satisfied. And I did present a couple of rudimentary plans last time that gave that concept. And you did take one of them and kind of flipped around and it's, but the whole concept was not completely invented. And I'm, um, I'm still not sold that this is the best way for everything. I'm not saying that it isn't, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not completely sold. I'm, I think we could do better. And that's pretty much, pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Spence. Kevin, for me, uh, go back to the, was that the two twenty that you started, we started with two point, I'm sorry, two point two O?
The very first one.
The current two point two O that's in your application? Cause I know you, there's.
Yeah.
That is, the one you were, the one where you explained it to, to, to two percent, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's just the restoration condition. Ultimately, when this plan, piece of property gets developed, that's all going to change, right?
That's correct.
That's all going to become parking, that's going to become parking lot ready. So this is a, is this a temporary condition?
That's correct.
Well, to make sure that was what I thought, right? Okay, um, anybody other commissioners? Um, anybody, other commissioners, have any questions? None, none, doesn't look like anybody. Kevin, you want to wrap up your, uh, your thoughts and everything?
I, I will, I, I will, because I think we're finally at a, at a good place where we can, where I think we can-
Kevin, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just want to point out that I, and Bill Kenny can-
Speaker, I just said your name.
Oh, thank you, Chairman Ralston, it's Attorney Finn. I just want to state to the record that I believe Bill Kenny sent to Donna that manual that he referred to, um, to be submitted into the record. So, you'll, you'll have that, the commissioners will have that as part of our record. Bill, can you confirm that, please? And maybe Donna can confirm she received it.
That's correct, I just emailed that about a minute ago.
Thank you.
And, and for the record, I'll also provide a link to this presentation, so that it's also part of the record. Obviously, it's part of the video record, but I'll give you the PowerPoint file as And, and just to kind of close this out, listen, I, I'm, I'm excited to be at the end of this discussion. I think we've gone through, um, a year and a month of discussions on this property and how the best way to restore it. The owner and the applicant is dealing with a piece of property and a, and a, and a mess that he inherited, and I think he's put forth, um, a very admirable effort in trying to rectify a situation in right or wrong, and create a situation where wetlands can be restored or, um, watersheds can be restored, and a site put back onto the right track. Um, I appreciate all the commission's time and consideration. I think what we've done addresses a lot of the commission's concerns, it's in response, it adequately addresses the items used to substantiate the denial of the last application. I think we've worked at length with commission and staff, and I think that we're in a place where we appreciate everyone's time, and we respectfully request the commission to use this application favorably and vote to approve this remediation or restoration application, so we can go on to the next step and get this property back where it needs to be. And we appreciate everyone's time and, and consideration.
All right, thank you. So, I make a motion to move this remediation submission to deliberations. Uh, Chris Hall, you're muted, but we read your lips.
I make the motion that we move this public hearing to deliberation.
You have a motion, Chris Hall, you have a second? Second for Commissioner Massaraco, all in favor? Uh, that's five, all, that's five, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, all right, we have one abstention, five to, uh, moving along, all right? Thank you, the motion passes. Uh, thank you for joining us tonight, moving along. Do application hearing determination, we have none. Uh, other bond release reduction, oh, wait a second, was there anything that we had to read into the, Donna, anything had to be read in the record? Moving too fast, maybe.
So, I do have what I used as exhibits, again, this was not a public hearing, but they've been read in before, but I will read the last, um, let's see, I'll start with, let me just see here, yeah, those were six, two. So, I'll read the last ones that were done, which was, um, updated town engineer comments, which was Exhibit 11. Exhibit 12 was a public comment by Margaret Minor from Rivers Alliance. Exhibit 13 was an intervenor submission letter and photos by Joel Green. So, that was it.
Thank you. Now, this thing is ready to be moved to deliberation. All right, now, we were at, we don't have to re-motion that, do we?
No.
Okay.
Do we? Mr. Finn, I see, I see your face, I want to make sure, shall we re-motion?
Well, my, actually, my, my, it is Attorney Finn, my concern is, is that I, I did get copied on Bill Kenny's email, sending you that manual, my guess is you haven't seen it yet, but-
I haven't.
But I think, uh, I think, I forget what number you went up to, but I think it's fair, since it's been stated on the record that it was submitted to you, that you should just reference that as, I think, Exhibit 14, or if that's the number you're up to.
Yeah, so it is Exhibit 14.
Okay. And, uh, I think, uh, I think Barbara Schellenberg, I think, is on, I always would prefer to make sure we don't make a mistake, or no mistake is committed, so it's up to you to decide whether you would remove. I would prefer that you do, but I'll defer to your, to your, your town council. Thank you.
I think you should, uh, okay.
All right, so-
Wait, hold on a second. The, um, the presentation that I made last time included three, um, three plans, one was the 2006 group plan, two others were concepts that I had had, do they need to be incorporated into the record?
Well, they are, because they were presented during the meeting.
But you don't have them as physical copies?
Uh, no.
Do you need them as physical copies?
Barbara?
Yeah, that's a good one.
I mean, we, we should have the physical copies, but as long as they were, you know, made part of the record, they were referred to as part of the record, I think that's okay, we can add the physical copies, as long as, you know, as long as it's clear.
Yeah, it was presented-
Or made part of the record.
For a commissioner to add material to the record? That's normal?
Anybody can add to the record.
Okay, all right, that was a true, all right. I never contemplated that one before. Okay, so, uh-
So, that would be Exhibit 15.
I mean, I can send them to you, but I can't do it right now, I'm on the-
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, so those-
As long as, as long as they're identified.
And those were proposed, um-
Alternative.
Alternative.
Then the Army Corps of Engineers manual, or whatever that was.
That's what Bill just emailed me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have a formal name for it to call it into the record, or is that unnecessary?
Um, I don't have access right now to my email at work, but, um-
Again, I think as long as it's clear for the record what's being referred to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're up to Exhibit 15. That was, that was Lois's, Exhibit 15 were the proposed alternatives that Lois presented at the previous meeting.
Okay, so we re-motion, right, at this point?
Yes.
We got everything? So, we'd like to make a motion to move this remediation submission to deliberations again? Motion.
I will, I will restate that.
All right, motion for Commissioner Hall, second. Second for Commissioner Massaraco. Barbara, you're giving us some feedback.
Yeah, so I-
No, no, you're, you're, we're getting a noise.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
That's what I meant. Um, so, yeah, second by Commissioner Massaraco, all in favor? Uh, it's got five, oh, is that sixth? We're all in favor now. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, good. All right, now we're moving along to the application hearing determination, none. Bond release reduction reports, none. Time extensions, none. Discussion, none. Deliberation session, no public input. Deliberation on completed hearings from this agenda. Uh, we have IWC-2021-08100 Cross Hill Road, move on invasive plants, revisitation with no invasive plants, cleaning of pipe, construction of rock dam.
You were sent the draft of, of a proposed approval, and it was in your packet, so hopefully you all reviewed it.
I move to approve the draft, the draft as written.
As written.
Yeah, a motion, draft as written. A second for Commissioner Gingers, all in favor? All right, motion passing unanimously. Are you, Ross, were you here for that? Oh, you, you listened to it?
Yeah.
Right, okay, so motion passing unanimously. Very good. So, now we have IWC agent activity report, agent approvals, none. Permit uses as of right, IPU-2018-01 Department of Public Works, road repair, replacement for general maintenance, IW regulation section is 4.2C, expires 3/28/2023, which we've also included, uh, East Village Road Drainage and 6976 West Maiden Lane Culver, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. enforcement deliber-
Eight on two, two high ridge.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, deliberate on two high ridge, we completed that.
Oh, I'm sorry, wasn't going too fast. Um, all right, so back to deliberation session, completed hearings on this agenda, two high ridge road, it's, excuse me, um, IWC-2021-07, two high ridge drive, new hall construction. Discussion is on.
Move, move with conditions.
A motion to approve the application with conditions from Commissioner Spence, you have a second? Thank you from Commissioner Gingers, what are the conditions, Commissioner Spence?
Uh, they agree to, if they don't, their EMS control, and comments that have not yet been addressed.
Um, yeah, I'm sorry, was that second?
It was the extra hay bales, and then to address the town engineer comments to be included with the submitted final plans.
Whatever satisfies, by whatever Scott's concerns are.
Okay.
Ken, I think we need to restate the motion, because we made that longstanding mistake. Would someone like to draft a motion for staff to, would someone like to make a motion for, to direct staff to draft a motion of approval?
Yes.
So, we do this right, so-
I forgot all that, too.
So-
I will restate that motion, I move that we direct staff to draft an approval letter with conditions of, um, hay bales added to the EMS controls, and that all of Scott's comments need to be addressed with town engineer comments.
A motion from Commissioner Spence, a second from Commissioner Gingers, all in favor? All right, motion passing unanimously, thank you. All right, so now we're at deliberation, we're, uh, none. Enforcement deliberations, deliberation on completed remediation submissions, or items of agenda, none. Well, tabled for, for 64 Cambridge, 16 administrative review, enforcement issues, none. Stat updates, none. General discussion, other minutes of May 26, 2021.
Okay, um, I have some revision, I'll leave them in quickly, no, I can send them to Donna tomorrow. Um, on page three, the fourth paragraph down, Commissioner Stewart stated he'd like to see the native material to use for the entire liner. Mr. Solis said they'd be agreeable to place an only name material above the line as a condition. The condition of approval is the addition.
I'm sorry, Lois, you read that, but I don't, what would be-
Just add, as a condition of approval to the end of that paragraph.
Oh, as a condition of approval.
I'm sorry, I did not specify. Um, okay, the next one's a little convoluted, bear with me, I'm writing in small areas. Okay, in the second sentence of the, one, two, three, seven paragraph down, starting with Commissioner Stewart. The second sentence, it starts with water is not known, and, um, I want to add to that, that the original concept was to pump until the watershed was restored.
Your original concept was-
To pump until the watershed was restored. Needs to be all on one property. I'm thinking, I don't, I did this a couple of weeks ago, so I remember what it was that I, oh, and she also suggested to bring in another expert, real time. The commission did not agree.
Are you still on number seven, on the, on page three?
Yes. I'll, I'll, like I said, I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
I think, I think that was it, I'm sorry for the, I didn't remember what I was doing. The move to approve with those changes.
A motion to approve the minutes with changes from Commissioner Spence, you have a second? Second from Commissioner Gingers, all in favor? Hi, Commissioner Stewart, are you in favor? Uh, thank you, motion passing unanimously. All right, minutes of June 9, 2021.
I would like to table them until next time.
All right, we got a motion to table, well, we'll just table, we don't need a motion.
Okay.
Uh, all right, so Regulation Amendment Committee?
Nothing.
Nothing. Public Outreach Committee?
Nothing.
Nothing. All right, correspondence received from Solitude Lake Management CTPP application for the use of pesticides in state waters, aquatic pesticide application in Lake Coos Tonic in Derby, Oxford, Seymour, Shelter, Monroe, specifically McConley Grove, permit number AQUA-2018-327, I'm sorry, 372, REV three-year permit. Someone like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting? Got a motion from Commissioner Gingers to join during the meeting, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Hall, all in favor? Uh, motion passes unanimously, this meeting is adjourned at 7:34 PM.
9:34 PM.
I'm sorry, 9:34 PM.